Hi.
Mittman?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Spence?
Hi.
Okay, then that agenda is approved. Takes us into the public hearing. There's the first public hearing for fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget amendment number one. So we'll go ahead and open that public hearing. If there's any members of the public here in the Zoom meeting to speak on that, you can raise your hand. By clicking your button on your computer, you can press star nine if you're dialed in on the phone. Karen, did we receive any comments?
No written or oral.
Okay. So I'll give the public a minute in case they are trying to comment. So seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Moves us to resolution number sixty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Resolution amending the current city budget amendment number one for the current fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
So move.
Second.
Barb and Luke, discussion. Okay, seeing none, Karen will take the vote.
Mittman?
Hi.
Spence?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Hanson?
Hi.
Nielsen?
Hi.
Sampson?
Okay, then that is approved. Over here, which then takes us into the consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Brian and Dane, discussion. Okay, seeing none, Karen will take the vote.
Hanson?
Hi.
Nielsen?
Hi.
Sampson? Did we lose him?
Yeah, I think we lost Jason.
Spence?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Mittman?
Hi.
Okay, then that carries. Which takes us into the public forum, which is times set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed. And on the agenda, no action may be taken. And again, members of the public may, that are joined in the Zoom meeting can indicate by raising their hand, or if they're on the phone by pressing star nine. And before we get to that, and we have an update for MetroNet, and then if there are any other public comments for the forum, then we'll take those. So gentlemen from MetroNet, you can go ahead and proceed.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'd like to introduce two of my colleagues who are on the call with us today. Dan Cachado, who's our government affairs manager is on the call, along with the most important person, who was John Story, who was our project manager and is in the process of getting ready to build Nevada. And, you know, we'll be briefed tonight, but one of the things we talked about in our original meeting, when the franchise or the ordinance to approve a franchise was approved, is over communicating. Is we're going to come to your town, we're going to dig up some things, but what we want to do is be totally transparent, keep you guys up to, you know, up to date as to exactly what we're doing. So this is the first of probably a couple of months calls that we'll do maybe on a monthly basis. But I've got John Story, who was on, on, on with us tonight. And John is our project manager, as I mentioned before, and John's just going to give you a quick update. I don't know if there's a whole lot right now, but he could at least give you an update as to where we are and what the next steps will be and what you can expect in the next couple of weeks and months. So without further ado, John, if you can take it from there, that'd be great.
Oh, afternoon, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so everybody probably started seeing letters, postcards maybe already arriving, probably in almost all the neighborhoods. I would think they all, I did them all at the same time, so everybody probably should have seen the letters come out by now. I'm not sure if postcards have come out. Also, starting Monday, the work order has already been through, we will start the ring coming over from Ames. So we're going to plow that all the way over off of Thirteenth Avenue, which is two hundred and twentieth street. Come back in on Fourth, I guess southwest or South Fourteenth or S fourteen. Right underneath that train trestle there. So we'll go all the way to there and then in about two months, or I'm sorry, in about two weeks, three weeks, maybe a month. I've got, my contractor is over here working, I've given him one more map in Ames to do, and it's only about twelve, fourteen thousand feet. Really, as long as the weather holds, won't take him very long to do. And then our underground crews will start over there. So, and I would say three to four weeks, we'll get started over there. Now, the aerial portion, you know, we're still, they've already started surveying the.
I think we lost you, John. Let me text him, guys.
If he has trouble, he can always use the phone number two to bypass.
Right. And honestly, I wish that's one area I could speak to, but that is the one area of the process that I'm not much help. So hopefully he'll jump on in a second and get you out of here.
Hey, Joe, I'm going to ask you a question while we wait, maybe, and maybe you can answer, maybe you can't. I've had quite a few inquiries on service maps. Like, I don't know if I necessarily need to know who's first, but are we going to be able to serve? Because I'm going to use myself for an example. My office and my shop is in the West Industrial Park in Nevada, out on the west side of town. And I've had quite a few, we honestly have marginal service, we only have one game in town, so to speak. So I've had quite a few of the businesses on this industrial park ask me if you guys are going to serve, if you're going to be able to serve this West Industrial Park. Is that in the plans to come now, especially since you said you're coming, he's coming down in town, dropping down in the west side of town? Are you guys going to be able to service it out here on the west side of the, the city limits?
You know, I'd have to take a look at that. How many, first of all, if it's in the plans, obviously we'll do it, but I don't have the plans in front of me. Maybe if John jumps on, he'll have an idea. I will tell you this, as we've mentioned before, even if it's not, you know, on plans itself, if it makes sense, you've got an industrial park and there's twelve businesses and it costs us this much to get there. And we get eight of the twelve to sign up, you know, we're always looking to, to, you know, move on from there as well. So if you want to ping me, Brian, with your address, I'll take a look at that as well, too, because we've got a, our business sales rep is starting next week. So, and by the way, businesses get a referral, too. So we'll give you a link, a lot of these businesses, give them a link, they put it on their website, and if other businesses sign up, they get a hundred dollar credit for each one that signs up. So, you know, business is a huge part, the business sales side is a huge part of our business. So we'll get off, if you want to get Ricardo your, your address, or you want to email me, I'll certainly look into it for you.
Okay, thanks.
I am back on, sorry about, somehow I got kicked off, so. But if I can go back to the, to the polls, the polls is, is going to be the biggest deal breaker in the whole thing. It just takes a while for telephone polls to come back. So like I was saying, six months, so at the latest, my guesstimation is I will still have Nevada built by this year. That is, that is still my goal, even with polls being as late as six months from now. So we can still get this done. But as far, I caught part of your question, do I know what, I don't know what direction, it depends how, how the polls come back to me, as soon as they come back, that's where I start building. So it's just, that's just the fastest, we're not, we're not talking of, you know, this isn't huge, so the whole town's going to be built relatively quick. So, you know, it's really hard to say what direction I'm going until I get the polls back.
Hey, John, could you just talk what the ring is? Again, I don't want to take too much time, I know you guys have a full agenda, real great what the ring is, that's the backbone, basically.
It's basically just the backbone, everything else is going to get tied into the ring. So that ring, you know, is, that's the lifeblood to get it to Nevada. And so that's the first thing I'm working on is to get it over here. Then as soon as possible, I mean, if I can, we've got it, we've got one map that's one hundred percent underground, it's out on the west end. If I can find a way without poles to get to one side light that thing, I'm going to try and light it. So it's possible, maybe I'll be able to get one done earlier. Or maybe a section done earlier that's all underground, that's close enough that I can get tied into the ring. Because we want to do a test bed anyway, thirty days before we turn everybody else up. So, you know, I'm a, I'm a do whatever I can to try and get the first ones up as, as soon as I can, so.
Okay. You guys have any other, I don't know how helpful that was, if you have any other questions, the bottom line is we're moving. I mean, and, and as we said, we want to get this, you know, tear the Band-Aid off, get in and out as fast as possible. And, because we're getting called, we're getting calls from your neighboring towns, by the way, the towns neighboring you. And obviously it was in the Ames Tribune that we're coming here, and all of a sudden my phone hasn't stopped ringing. But that said, our goal is to get this built as soon as possible. So are there any other questions for John or Dan or myself?
Counsel, are you good? Okay, well, thanks for the report, we appreciate it.
All right, guys.
Okay, thanks, guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we do have a member of the public wishing to speak, so I'll allow John Rose to talk. John, when you get connected here to speak, we'll have you give your address, name and address for the record.
Am I on? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Very good. So my name is John Rose. I don't live there in Nevada. I'm here on behalf of Nevada Business, AgSource. Its address is eighteen hundred Lincoln Highway, just north of the high school practice fields. We've been there since two thousand and three. We at AgSource have a recurring issue with rainwater that I'd like to bring to the attention of the council. During heavy rains, water flows eastward down Lincoln Highway. And with no sewer in our little part of town to capture it, it eventually accumulates on our property, which is on the south side of the road. Ponds sometimes form on our section of property, particularly in front of some of our loading docks. If you don't know our business, we have many warehouses, we store seed for several seed companies. I believe I, I shared a recent photo of this with Mayor Baker and City Administrator Martinez. To be clear, we have some drainage tile installed, more than some, actually a lot, even in this area, but it can't drain quickly enough when the rain is severe. Some kind of additional surface drain at the curb of the road, which only the city could do, or some other kind of rainwater management tactic is required to, to deal properly with this rainwater. Ideally, the water would be sent to the northeast corner of our property to a culvert that runs under Nineteenth Street. Water in this part of town wants to flow south and east generally. We'd appreciate it if the city could look into this problem, and I thank you for giving me the chance to raise this with you all. That's all.
Counsel, anything for Mr. Rose? And does any staff have any information they'd like to provide? You're not seeing any, counsel, how would you like to proceed?
Is it possible to just spend some time studying the area, seeing what the, we've got rain happening right now, we could see what's happening and talk about possible solutions, partner, in some way?
Is that a question for me? I'd be happy to have you study it.
Well, I will interject, John, this is Brian Hanson, I've been, I've been on the council for going on twelve years now, and this has been an ongoing problem that a lot of the county drainage, you know, we've had multiple discussions over the years, and Mayor Barker's been involved with it, I think, too, as, as a council member and as mayor, too, that we have so much county drainage that comes down from the north that floods our park, floods the parking lot, as you probably well know. It floods the street, you know, and like you said, it runs south. It's just been an ongoing problem that we've looked at lots of times, never really did anything, never really got anywhere with, you know, other entities wanting to be part of the solution. But I personally, I guess I'm not against, you know, whatever the other council wants to do. If we want to have somebody take a look at it and see if there's anything short term that we can do to help, because I think we all know that to really fix it, it's a long term kind of a big deal. So, I mean, that's just kind of a little back, little back history on, on this situation.
That, that's helpful to know. I, look, I, I know that we are end of the line out there, there's nobody past us. It goes Starbucks and then us and then cornfields. And it's not cost efficient, it's cost prohibitive to put in something like a true sewer, it doesn't make sense. But perhaps there's something short of that that the city could do, or we could do together, that would catch the water as it comes off the road during these heavy rains. I don't know what that is, I'm not a water engineer, but I would love to have it looked at.
It, this is Luke Spence, have we, has there been any research in the past on what can be done? Because Harrington floods every single year. So I, I'm hoping that in the past, you know, twenty-five, thirty years of the parks been there, maybe we've looked into what needs to be done to help that area in the past? And do we know what needs to be done? And then we can figure out cost and, and find a solution. Is there any, I don't know if Sean or somebody who's been around for a while might have that answer. But I, I think that's the first place to go, just figure out what needs to be done, and then we can address costs and stuff like that as we find out.
Mayor, do you want to speak to that, or you want me to?
Well, you can, or Sean, Larry's, doesn't look like he's connected to audio, or I'd see if he knows about it. Go ahead, Brian.
Well, Luke, kind of the backstory on that is if you get out on the north side of Harrington Park, you'll see that great big culvert that goes under the railroad tracks.
Yep, and all the drains north of.
There's a large water table on the county that runs through that culvert, runs into Harrington Park, runs across our parking lot, runs across the street, runs into the county ditch that is actually on the east side of Nineteenth Street, but yet the guys on the corner there, they are like a residual damage, they just, there's so much water. We've done some looking at that over the years and studies that it really has came down to we're almost half to build a retainer pond in Harrington, a fairly good sized lake pond, I don't know what, what it is, to help retain that. But so much of it's the county, and I don't want to throw the county under the bus, but they say, well, you know, it's not my problem if it runs under the bridge, it's the city's problem at that point. We have looked at doing that and other things, and, and we get with Larry, I can't remember if he was involved with that, I know it's been a few years ago, that we looked at that pretty hard. And you know, you can imagine, it's not cheap to go in and dig up a retainer pond and do all that. So there's things, but I'm, I guess we never talked about, because there is a, the natural waterway goes through the west side of Nineteenth Street, because, or excuse me, the east side, across on the east side. Because that's like the county ditch, county waterway, it's FEMA floodplain over there. Maybe there is a, a short term solution of a culvert or something that helps divert the water more to the east side. But as far as fixing the problem, I think we're talking a lot of money to actually fix it like it needs to be, you know what I mean? If that makes sense.
Say something, Brian. I, I don't think that our, our told.
In the ten years that I've been actually ten plus years, I have never been involved in any type of study or looking into drainage issues in that area. Now, one of the, one of the things we talked about as a sponsored project was potentially doing something in the Harrington Park area to it has to be stormwater quality related, but we could do, you know, stormwater retention in that area potentially, that, to hold that water. And so there's an opportunity to maybe pair up with some of the sponsored projects to do retention and retention for quality and also to reduce the volume that runs off that property. Other than that, what I can tell you is we can, we can take a look at it quickly and see where the volumes of the waters are going. And see if there's something that can be done just to divert some of that water away from that.
If I, if I could just get in one more word, and that won't take up any more of your time. It appears as though the water's coming down Lincoln Highway from the west, and the road pitches slightly south, and so it drops off on our property. So it doesn't actually seem like it's coming from Harrington Park, although I know when we get really heavy rains, then it submerges the whole road, and we do indeed get water from Harrington Park. But that's rare. What I'm talking about is, is a heavy rain, the water comes down the road, and there's no sewer on the south side. And just runs and where it wants to finally go is in front of our loading dock.
I'm going to suggest, as Barb did, that we do have, have Larry's team take a look and come back with a little proposal. If there's something that can be done, and this is an important business in our community, important employer, along with that, that park, that is a quality of life issue for us. So I think it's, it's worth a little bit more investigation.
Where everybody is?
I agree with that. I agree with standing, Barb, yep.
So it looks like we have consensus for staff to take a look and report back. Okay. Thanks, John, for bringing that to us.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, does, is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak? It doesn't appear like it, so we'll close the public forum and move into old business, old business A, ordinance number ten ten, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. An ordinance amending the city code of Nevada, Iowa by adding chapter one fourteen cable franchise fee, it's the third and final reading.
Both to approve.
Second.
Okay, Dane and Brian, any discussion? And just as a reminder for the public, as we get into agenda items, there's a particular item that you wish to speak on, you'll click raise hand or click star nine on the phone, so that we know that you want to speak on that item. So discussion? Okay, seeing none, Karen will take the vote.
Nielsen?
Hi.
Hanson?
Hi.
Mittman?
Hi.
Sampson?
Hi.
Spence?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Okay, that is approved, takes us to old business B, discussion appropriate follow-up on Ackerman's claim regarding sewer issues.
I think, I think Larry's email and notes that he sent it was pretty self-explanatory, in my opinion.
Has anybody, did anybody reach out to the Ackermans about what we talked about at the last meeting? I thought it was left, that we were going to have construct, talk to them, or have them at least work, look into it. But Larry, it sounded like Larry hadn't done that yet, because he didn't think it was construct, so I'm just wondering if anybody told them what happened two weeks ago.
And I, I did not reach out to them, so.
I think no matter what we decide, which I said, I totally agree with Larry's memo, I think someone at least owes the Ackermans an explanation, I don't know who that is, should reach out and explain to them what Larry explained to us, the, the chain of command, the, the you know, the responsibility, who did what, and like Larry said, there's no record of us or, or anybody doing anything with the private hookup. So even if we decide to do nothing, I still think someone needs to reach out to Mike and Patty and say, here's, here's what happened, here's where it is, here's what it is. And then if they want to, you know, follow up with construct themselves, at least they should know what, what's going on, just not leave them in the dark, so to speak.
Yeah, they should at least know, you know, that we, we got a reply from the insurance, so they should know what the standing is on that, just so they can know where the next step is for them to, to proceed. I think it sounds like they need to figure out, it sounds like, according to Larry, they they probably worked out all the deals with the subcontractors when the construction was done, so they know who those people are and should know that that's the next step for them. But, yeah, I, I meant to go talk to them, should have in the last two weeks, and time got away from me. But I, I can go talk to them tomorrow, but I'm sure Sean or Larry or somebody would probably be more knowledgeable on all the details, but somebody needs to.
Have the Ackermans reached out since they received the letter from ICAP?
Not that I'm aware of, I, not to me, anyway.
So I'm not seeing any motion for action, but I am seeing, at least looks like by body language, some consensus for staff to reach back out and discuss it with the Ackermans.
What's an appropriate motion?
I don't know if we necessarily need one, Aaron, I think Aaron's on here, she can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I'm on, only if, only if you're going to take action to, to do something, would you need to make a motion, otherwise you can just direct staff.
I guess I'd, all I'd like is a, an email from whoever goes and talks to them afterwards to let us know that that's been completed. And if we haven't done anything in two weeks, we should probably be doing that this week, if not sooner.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can, I can make contact with the Ackermans, I, I probably should take care of that. And if we have to do any kind of follow-up, I'll get back with you.
Sounds good. So I'm seeing consensus for Rick to talk to Ackermans and then report back to council. Okay. Anything else on that item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to old business C, resolution number sixty-one, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Resolution to rescind, resolution number forty-six, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, regarding employee leave during COVID nineteen pandemic.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Brian with the motion, saying with a second, any discussion?
The question, we're getting rid of the provisions of allowing fourteen days of paid leave if an employee's primary care physician orders a self-quarantine. What are we going to do if somebody gets infected now? We're still offering anything like that, or especially now that we're opening, especially if we're talking about opening things back up now.
I thought this had to do with more if you were to leave state and had to be quarantined because of that.
Well, but.
Jason, you're correct, this does not change, and I can let Rick speak to the reasoning for it, but this doesn't change the city's obligations under the FFCRA. So to the extent that an employee is infected or has to care for somebody who's infected or has childcare that they have, that they don't have because of COVID nineteen, the city still will be providing that leave. So this doesn't erase the federal law, it just is a change to those individuals that voluntarily leave state and maybe don't bring anything back.
Okay.
And I would agree with what Aaron is talking about, we've been trying to follow the guidelines provided by the state as, as this has been unfolding. And as you know, there's been several changes from when this first came out up till date. And, and it just seemed to make more sense to just follow the guidelines and the laws that's in place now. And, and not be put in the middle between the language that we originally had. And, and not be put in the middle between the language that we originally had and what the current recommendations and guidelines are. This just makes things much more simple. If we have any, any COVID issues, we'll just look at them on a case-by-case basis and, and we'll, we'll deal with them accordingly.
Sounds good.
Any questions about that?
No, thank you, Rick.
Any further discussion? And then seeing none, Karen will take the vote.
Hanson.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Hi.
Nielsen.
Hi.
Sampson.
Hi.
Spence.
Hi.
And that's approved. Takes us to old business D, review of resolution number 047A 2019 2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to take appropriate emergency measures during the COVID-19 pandemic amended. Can Rick or Aaron summarize the changes?
This is Aaron. There are not changes to this resolution. But we wanted to put it back in front of the council because if you look at seven, it talks about it being reviewed within 30 days. And so we just wanted to put it back in front of council, see if there's additional changes that you want to consider, if you just want to continue forward with what you've already got.
Can I ask a question on?
I think you, uh, Luke, you had a question for me about region, is that correct? Did you ask me that?
Right, yeah. Yep.
Okay, I threw that question out to a number of individuals and didn't get back anything that was really specific. When I read that, I, I had assumed that that would probably be our county and surrounding counties to our area, and that would be our region. There certainly would be exceptions on a case-by-case basis, but that was my understanding of what a region is.
Okay, yeah, I, I was looking at part seven, paragraph D and E, I guess, that talks about from outside the state or region. I didn't know what region meant for those that were wondering, but my, my only concern with that was when we start talking about sport fields and stuff like that and other places, people coming from outside of town. Anyway, I didn't know what we were talking about when it came to region. I'm thinking mainly the high school baseball field. And how it would pertain with concessions or bathrooms, parking lots and the field itself, and how, how this is going to pertain to, to that. Now that it sounds like they might be trying to do some high school sports this summer, I think, but does that, does that pertain at all, or?
I think that would, that would be appropriate. One of the conversations I have with Tim Hanson is when, when parks was looking to make cancellations on programs that are already in place, particularly those that are applying to our, our elementary age and middle, middle school kids. I think from my personal point of view, and I think Tim agrees with me, the optics just look bad. If we cancel programs that we have for our people here, and yet we allow other organizations outside of our region or outside of our state coming in and using our facilities. Initially, my concern was, you know, there's, there's considerable income that, that comes in on that. But Tim laid it out and said, we hardly make any money at all with the overtime costs and field upkeep and all the other things that go along with that. You know, it's, it's a break even more than anything else. Any benefits from the community is any purchases that take place from people coming from the outside coming on in. So using that as a consideration, I, I just don't see us doing anything that's going to just make the city look bad because we're canceling services in one area and taking them in on another. But again, we're, we're still looking at that, but that's, that's kind of how it looks. And I certainly don't want to give us a black eye by, by allowing that to take place.
You know, Luke, I can, a little bit of that too, is if depending on what this, we decide as a city to do with the, it, it looks like the high school baseball and softball is going to move forward. The governor opened that up, the athletic unions opened that up. But they have a lot of stipulations on that stuff. One of them being is there can be no concession stands. They really discourage parents and spectators to, obviously, they actually requested there not be in the bleachers too much, you know, but obviously spaced out because they want people to bring their own chairs and distance and that. So they, if the schools decide to move ahead, which it sounds like they were gonna, I was in a Zoom meeting for that last Thursday night. They're, the state's pretty, pretty stringent on the rules they're going to have. So whatever we decide is, you know, that's a decision we'll have to make since the high school uses a city facility to play baseball.
Yeah.
Yeah, let Tim kind of, you know, we'll have to figure that one out. So I think Rick's right on track with what he said there.
So does council want to see any changes to the original resolution?
I mean, the original resolution obviously said city hall would be opening on or after May 4th and.
Well, that's the next item with that. So the, the resolution and the proclamation were, were different, correct?
Yep, you're right. Yep. Nope. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong agenda item here.
Okay, so for, so I'm seeing no changes for the resolution. So then we can move on to E, which is what where Dane was headed for discussion appropriate follow-up on opening public facilities. So with that.
Hey, I don't think, did we ever vote on that previous, on the, on item D?
If you're going to keep it as is, you don't need to vote on it again. It just needed to be reviewed every 30 days. So if, if you are comfortable with the language that's there, just leave it on the books.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and then item E was, got some questions from several council members there, which is where that came from. I put thoughts down. I'm sure Rick can share his thoughts. You guys can share yours and decide if there's what direction you would like to go. So maybe go to Rick first.
Sure. I tend to be a little conservative on this stuff and I, and the mayor and I have had several discussions about this and I, I think anyone can make a strong argument for opening it up or closing things. The way things have been, you can see it from two different perspectives and, and feel fairly strongly on both. My opinion is I, I don't see us, I don't see the city not providing any services to our community that, that they would normally get, even if we were wide open. So you know, the, at least from the public safety point of view, all services are being provided. I know that Jeremy would like to do more with the streets department because he's lost half his force, but you know, waste, wastewater and water treatment are another concern I have. If, if, if the COVID was to, to strike them, we'd kind of be hurting if, if we were all working at the same time. So from my opinion, I would like to keep facilities closed until the 15th. And then, and then between now and then, we could get all our workers back, but the facilities remain closed. And then after the 15th, if nothing goes bad and everything's going well, we can look at, we can look at opening up some of the facilities. But I would again, leave that up to the individual department heads and their staff and see how they're feeling about, about everything that's going. The other aspect of it is I know there's been a lot of questions concerning the library and I've talked to Shannon about this several times. The library is an entity in and of itself, and they have a library board and I don't think we have the authority to let them open up if the library board is not comfortable with that. And I don't think they're comfortable with that, but we can talk about all the other facilities, but I think whatever decision is made, should not be affecting how the library is going to operate. And if you guys have questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
I, I do. And I understand that this is uncharted territory and that we've got a lot of, you know, folks that may have concerns about returning to work and whatnot. I don't love surprises though, and I guess on April 30th, when the mayor sent that, that memo out that said that city hall would open on or, or after May 4th, I was under the impression that we would start working in that direction. And it was 10 days after May 4th that I was surprised by this email asking department heads 10 days after the fact how they wanted to proceed. And also that night I was surprised when my wife was told by city staff that the city hall would be opening after June 1st. So I guess I just, I feel like that wasn't communicated well. And I felt like because of what the mayor's proclamation had said, that that was the direction we were going to be heading.
Rick, where are we staff-wise? Are we still splitting forces?
Uh, we are at city hall. I think Jeremy has brought back his, his other half of his department, but he's, he's taking steps to make sure that we're keeping as far away as we can as possible. I know Tim Hanson kept his staff in place, but you know, his position was most everybody works by themselves as it is, you know, cutting grass or doing services in our community. So it wasn't a real challenge for him. Wastewater is still split and I believe water has just gone back to working, everyone's working at the same time. And of course, the fire chiefs with the fire department and they're all volunteers, so they're not, they're not in the building unless they choose to be. I know that the fire chief has taken steps for when staff is at the fire department, the number that can be there and social distancing. And the, other than our non-certified officers, all the officers have been working full-time. And then one other thing with the library. Shannon has them work from the library from time to time, but mostly they're working from home.
Well, I'll start by saying I, I don't really think we, we as a council should be talking about when we're going to open any of the, or, or talk about opening any of the facilities until we talk about when we're going to meet again at city hall. Cause I, I don't think it's great leadership if we're going to tell other, everybody else to go to work while we sit in our living rooms and talk to each other. So that should probably be the lead of the discussion of do we want to meet in person again in June? Is that when we want to start that or, or, or what? I, I think that's where we should be starting from.
Oh, we will be on June 3rd, right? We'll all be there.
Yeah.
Is that for sure?
June, yeah, 4th, yeah, for the interviews.
June 4th.
And 4th.
All right, June 4th, sorry.
Yep.
What about for our next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, where, where I am on this is we, this is going to be here a while. You know, we need to figure out what's responsible. And as large as the city hall chambers are and where the state's guidelines are, if we do meet in person, I would still be an advocate of allowing public to participate online in the meantime. So that those that are at risk or not comfortable, don't have to come to city hall to, to participate in the meetings.
I would agree with that. I don't, I don't have a problem with us meeting in person. And I think you're right. If we're going to ask city hall staff to return to work, I think that we should as well. I guess I'd be interested to know what precautions will be put in place too, or I guess, you know, obviously our staff are already protected by a large Plexiglas window. You know, and part of me wonders why they can't be working now, but you know, I understand there's, there's concerns. But yeah, as far as, as that double standard, I would completely agree. If we expect them to come back to work, we should, should also be meeting in person ourselves.
Has there been anything done with the council chambers to help keep the social distance guidelines with all of us? You know, the what, 10 of us sitting up front and staff and all that stuff? Have we thought about that?
We have not done anything in the council chambers at this time. I spoke with Jeremy Riddle. He's had his crew come in on a couple of different occasions and completely wiped down the entire public area in city hall. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, mayor?
Yes, we can.
So we've done that. If, if, if the city council wants to start meeting in June, I'll have to get with staff and we'll start looking at how we want to realign everything at, in the council chambers to, to make it work. I like the mayor's idea. If, if we, if there's any way possible, we can continue to keep the, the public involved in what the city's doing via Zoom. I, I think that's a, that's a great idea if we can do that. So we'll, we'll have something in place when, when you guys want to meet on the 8th. Just not sure exactly what that's going to be.
And Karen, I know you were talking with a, about IT hardware upgrades in the chambers. Do we have any, any leads there on upgrading that?
I, I guess I wasn't involved in that really to speak of. I mean, we're looking at monitors and those kinds of things getting bigger. Is that what you mean?
Because the gentleman that came in at the beginning of this, when we first tried to, to stream and it didn't go so well. I know we were, we followed up with him on, on what could be done differently. I, I had seen an email from either you or Kathy about that.
Well, we did have the, Craig put in the piece that goes to my computer, but that was before that first Zoom meeting that we were bombed, but we were handling it differently too. So we haven't tested it yet to see how it would work if we just, and we didn't have webinar at that time either. So we also handled them differently. So.
Yeah, because, because for me, the issue, because we can spread out more in the chambers if, if we need more space. But we'd want to make sure the public can participate well. So that would involve making sure that hardware works as far as picking up your microphones and coming out the speakers. So Zoom needs to integrate with that.
But if you're going to move from the tape, from the DAS at the front and they're not going to be in front of those microphones, it's not going to work or the cameras. So you have to keep that in mind.
For those that are wanting to reopen the, the facilities, whether it's city hall or wherever, what, what are we looking at? What's changed to, to bring us to that opinion? Cause I, I read cases every day. Keep, I've been the same, the highest death toll for a day was Saturday. What, what are we looking, other than the state's guidelines having changed, what else is pushing us to, to open this stuff up?
My question would be the opposite of that. What social distancing guidelines, what type of protections aren't already in place? That is preventing our staff from being able to work. I want them to be able to work safely, but I know especially our city hall staff, they are behind a window. I think they mostly work six feet apart from each other. So I guess what's going to be different 15 days from now than is, is already the case?
Yeah, I mean, for, for me, one change is what we've learned since this started is it's a lot less likely to be picked up off an item or a surface. It's a lot more likely to be direct droplets. So the fact that like Dane hit on, you know, all the governmental agencies are talking about barriers, like we have the Plexiglas. And, and so those precautions, when you're not close quarters, because if, if you take out nursing homes, healthcare workers, meatpacking facilities and household contact, the rate of transmission is, is fairly low.
And I would hope any policy we have going forward, and I don't, I'm sure this conversation is already happening, but obviously, you know, having people check their temperatures when they come to work, wearing masks, things like that would also seem to be common sense. But yeah, I mean, I guess I just don't understand what's going to be different 15 days from now that we, you know, that we have to wait until mid-June.
I guess that the counter to that would be, is it worth opening to then find out that it was the source of a spread around town? I guess that the counter to that would be, is it worth opening to then find out that it was the source of a spread around town? You know, it probably not likely it would be, but I think that's why a lot of restaurants have hesitated in opening up, whether. Here or elsewhere that, you know, that that they desperately wanna be open to have business, but at the same time, the the amount of negative publicity. And of course, and just knowing that you're a part of the spread. Um isn't worth it, so if we open up playgrounds or City Hall or something like that, and then we find out that. There was a, you know, one case, two cases, however, whatever the number is, is that worth? City Hall being open if the service is already being provided?
One of the other reasons I think we talked about early on when we didn't know much about. The virus and. If somebody here comes to work, doesn't know they have it, finds out the next day they do have it, they have infected the whole staff. So we are all now quarantined.
So I guess what's our path forward then? Cuz that's still gonna be the case in fifteen days, cuz the virus isn't going anywhere. I mean, I. I get everything that's being said, and I certainly don't wanna be the one that's putting our our staff in danger, but. In fifteen days, the virus is still going to be here, and we're still going to have to deal with it, and that's, it's gonna be that way for. You know, probably another year plus until there's possibly a vaccine, so. Um I mean, I get everything being said, and I agree with, you know, not wanting to put our employees in harm's way, but I also. You know, thinking at this long term, what's gonna change in fifteen days?
Well, in in fifteen days, we could have, there could be a drop in cases statewide, drop in deaths statewide. There could be. There could be improvements that are seen, but I I just don't see that right now. We haven't flattened that curve that they keep talking about. It's it's just continued to go up, so I I don't know that that. You know, i- if if nothing's gonna change, then, you know, that's why schools are out. That's why. So many closings have happened, cuz there isn't a change in the long term, so we've made those decisions, so I I wanna see things open up too. Um but, you know, it it's not worth. Spreading, you know, it, you know, they they having a playground open isn't worth the cost of what the 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 potential cost, I don't think.
I think what we're wrestling with is are we trying to? You know, make the virus go away completely, or are we trying to slow the spread? Um I mean, I think that that's way beyond this council meeting as far as as that debate goes. But I mean, I do think, that's just why I keep coming back. I'll I'll stop monopolizing the time if anybody else wants to.
I think as long as we're sanitizing after visitors, um as Dane mentioned, there's there's distance between. Workers. Um if they don't feel the fear of coming to work, I should, think we should open up and let them come to work.
And if they're afraid of coming to work because they're afraid they're gonna catch something, do we just let them stay at home like they're doing now? The other thing you touched on is, how often are we gonna clean the lobby area of City Hall? Every two hours, every four hours? You know, we've uh, you know, we're not. You know, we've talked about whether or not we should have the bathrooms open, and legally, we don't have to have the bathrooms open. But how's that gonna look to our community if we're gonna open up City Hall and they wanna come in and go to the bathroom and they can't? And then are we going to, are we gonna um, are we gonna have city uh council chambers cleaned every time that they're used? You guys meet on a Monday night and then the next day I got a crew coming in to clean everything, then we lock it up until the next meeting? I mean, I certainly understand sanitizing and keeping things clean and and uh and Dane touched on it, we could be doing the same thing in a year. Or it could change in two months. I mean, we just don't know these things, but if we're not, if we're not depriving the community of the services they expect from city. I don't see why there should be a rush to open things up.
I agree with Rick. I mean, if it takes a year, yeah, that that's not a fun year, but a year is a pretty small blip in the long. In the whole grand scheme of things. I I don't think it will take a year, but I don't think we're at the point now where. We should be opening stuff up.
Well, the one thing that no one has mentioned is that there is increased testing. Can we get our employees to, you know? That certainly could give some peace of mind before we're moving forward. I mean, it seems like. That would be a logical next step that is something new to add to the mix.
I mean, yeah, test.
I'm not sure if we can accomplish. And I can make some calls on that, but I I don't know if we can do that. Um you know, and then I I look at our. You know, I look at communities around us and, you know, Ames, for example, biggest town in the county and. Everyone goes there at one time or another, they're gonna be closed till July first. You know, and they're, you know, they're using the same points of discussion that we are right now, pros and cons, and that sort of thing.
Well, and I think if if we do decide to open, I'm thinking more along the lines of the the.
You cut out a little bit, Luke.
Luke, we can't hear you.
No, I don't think you can hear us either. We can't, we can't hear you. Somebody text him.
Write it on a piece of paper and hold it up so people, so we can see it.
We can see you, just can't hear you.
This is where miming would be really handy for Luke.
We'll give him another second to pop back in.
Have we asked the front office staff if they're wanting to come back? Are they, you know, itching to get back?
We've talked about it. Um. I have been here a lot, um not just on my days, and of course, I work from home. Um I have a computer and I get into the server, and so I do most things that I can do here at home. Um a lot of the other staff does the same. They take work home, like he printed bills, he took a bunch of bills home to fold and stuff. So they are working from home. Um we're doing some things. I mean, I I think like Rick said, uh getting staff back June one and. Getting some processes in place and getting us familiar with what we need to do and. I don't know if we need a policy on how, you know, how often it needs to be cleaned or what is expected. Um. We also lost our custodian. Today was his last day, so we're also without that him, and. We're going to be doing additional things already and. So I think we're ready to come back. We're not saying that so much as.
So so is it a matter of staff just needing time to get acclimated to what the new roles are going to be versus?
I I think that's a lot of it, yeah, and even the two weeks till the middle of June that Rick was, you know, and even the governor has. Pushed the proclamation to would give us some time to, we just got in some hand sanitizer. Are we gonna have hand sanitizer out there in the lobby? You know, is is that something we should provide and? Those kinds of things, and that's hard to get.
Right.
Even even the wipes, we're, we're almost out of those, and those are difficult to get. And some of those things you use for your copiers and those things that you don't wanna spray, so. It's a lot of that and.
Okay, that's uh that's that's good to hear. I mean, yeah, cuz part of it for me is just not wanting to see this continue to say, well, two more weeks, two more weeks, two more weeks. Like if there's a plan, you know, I I I'm a lot more on board with that, I guess. I just, um it's just nice.
What's talking about for us to um staff to kinda come back June one and try and. Work out our procedures and kinda get acclimated again here and what each of us need to do or what we should be doing and. Those are my thoughts.
Okay.
And I guess that's kinda where I am too. I don't wanna keep asking these same questions a month from now that we've been asking for the last month, so I would just like to see. Us solve some of those questions so that we have answers and we're not having this discussion on July first.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Um I don't know if when I cut out, but I guess I was just saying that for so things mainly like parks, I'm thinking more public areas. Uh when we do decide to open them, whether it's tonight or a year from tonight, it'd be nice to have it be collective with the county. I know Rick sent us some stuff of that talks about what other towns are doing. I think it'd be a good idea. That when we decide to open those things, that it's in conjunction with all the other cities, so that not everybody comes here or. Or to wherever, you know, the park's open and everybody goes to Ames or something like that, uh it should probably be collective. Um with all the other cities, cuz most of us are kind of all in the same boat. Ames is is bigger for sure, but the rest of us are kind of all pretty similar. In size and facilities and that type of stuff.
I think one challenge there is you have some communities that are almost fully open and others that are fully closed and everywhere in between, so I think it's gonna be hard to get. E- every community in the county doing the exact same thing at the same time.
It's good that the conversation's happening, though. I'm glad Rick put the word out for that and asked what they were doing.
I agree. I are there, is there a county mayor's association, Brad?
There's a executives call um that they've been doing, and that's where a lot of that is discussed.
So it's obvious to you that it is all over the place. Got it.
Can speak on that, cuz my wife normally works during that, so I haven't been able to be on the last few weeks.
One of the interesting things about having that meeting is that um everyone is trying to be considerate of of everyone else. Um and this was touched on earlier, if if one community decides to have fireworks, just for example. One community decides to have fireworks and nobody else does, everybody's going to that community. Same with the pool and same with any other activities. Uh because people want those things, and we don't wanna inundate another community that's not wanting to have an influx of of people from outside their community. And one suggestion was uh for pools, for example, uh people only that live in that community. In that zip code can go there. Well, how how do you enforce that? And and you know, it becomes very cumbersome. Um you know, so so by talking about some of these things, um I think. I think most of the cities and the mayors are trying to be considerate uh of everyone else, but um nobody wants to be caught. Um by surprise by the actions of another community, so um the the discussions usually are anywhere from um. An hour to, I think our longest meeting was an hour and forty-five minutes. Just depends on what the topic is and what the most recent changes are. Uh that came from the governor's office and the new guidelines that comes out. Um so I I really appreciate that discussion and um. And getting information, which is, I thought, I thought I'd share with you guys so you have an idea, at least a flavor of what what people are doing, but. But the thing is, is everything changes so quickly, and so our meeting day after tomorrow, there's gonna be a lot of changes because of um the new announcement by the governor. So I'll be interested to see what takes place um at that meeting as well. And Dane, um to get back to a comment you made earlier, um I've been kinda taking this like two weeks at a time. I. I I don't feel comfortable jumping out, you know, like Ames did. I I wouldn't be comfortable in saying we're closed until July first. Uh and I'm sure they had very good reasons to go that far in in the future, but I don't feel comfortable in doing that because of the changes that take place. We might be able to do things a little differently in in half that period. Um so uh if if you're not comfortable with the two week jumps. That I've been doing, I I apologize for that. That's that's just the way I look at it.
Anything else on this?
Mr. Mayor, may I uh chime in on this?
Sorry, who is, was that Jeremy?
Mike Neal.
Oh, yep, go ahead, Mike.
Uh the wastewater plant's really the only department that hasn't been discussed. Um redheaded stepchild. Um our our ability to. Separate our staff is not like, you know, the council chambers, we can't spread out. Our staff doesn't go out into the community and spread out and work, we're confined within the facility and are. Uh one place that is climate controlled, where I have my office, the ability for my staff to congregate. Eat their lunch, have their breaks, is an area that's smaller than my shed in my backyard. So s- uh six feet social distancing is is not gonna be. Possible down there on and not have people hanging out in parts of the plant that would become quite uncomfortable to inhabit. Once uh the heat of the summer kicks in. Um I don't know what the answer is, I did. But we have three staff members down there, two of them have, which. Self, two of them have, two of us have the ability to operate that facility, uh have the knowledge. Uh my third staff member has less than a year uh with us and would not be able to operate by itself. If any one of, any one of us become infected, um. There's nobody. Um then somebody's working sick or, you know, I'm living in a camper down there or something. I I I wish I knew what the answer was. Uh I've discussed it with my staff, they're, they're concerned about the situation. I think if we're told to go back to work, we'll go back to work. I know there's been some discussion about, it's my department, I need to make that call. I'm not comfortable in doing so. I'm not comfortable in directing my staff to do something that they feel may jeopardize their health and well-being. That being said, if. Anybody above my pay grade wants us to go back to work as a complete staff, I'm gonna need a directive.
And I can just speak my own opinion. I think each department is very, very different. You know, I think what the public expects from wastewater is that their toilets flush, and what they expect from waters, that water's flowing. Um so how you provide services is different, and like you mentioned, your ability to. Provide safety precautions for your staff is different based on your facility, so I think each one needs to be looked at. Looked at differently. Um you know, City Hall lobby obviously has different security precautions and the public's. Uh need to access it, so I I mean, I think as elected officials, I I think we have more. Of of um. More concern, I guess, over where the public would normally expect to access, so you know, sit the lobby and. I know Shannon will report later on on library, we hear about that, cuz people expect services from the library. Um but I, no one from the general public is gonna walk into the wastewater plant and expect anything there, as long as the system is functioning, so. I I have not had much thought or discussion about mandating anything to certain departments like that.
Mike, don't get me wrong, I would just as soon uh be back there because on the, you know, the days. That uh we are separated and I'm at the plant, I'm there alone, and in addition to just. Taking care of the facility and everything that it involves for one person uh ties up a good portion of my day. Um and then with the additional Zoom meetings and things that I'm having to uh do regarding the new wastewater facility. Um I'm finding myself chasing my tail, so I would just assume be all of us together and have my staff. You know, take care of the minutia, and then I could do what I need to do, but. Given our situation, that's going to be difficult, and I wish I had a solution, I really do.
Is there a cost-effective way to have a temporary space that would be more comfortable? And I guess that's something we could talk about over the next couple. And I guess that's something we can talk about over the next couple of weeks, but.
Uh, yeah, I don't know what that would be, to be quite honest.
Mike, can you meet in that old abandoned windmill that's still there?
If you want to pay me your rental fee, I'll.
It's long, it's more than six feet tall.
So is there anything else on this topic or do we bring it back next time?
Brett, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, this is Tim at Park and Rack. Um, you know, a couple of things that are out there obviously are, you know, the questions that we're receiving is what about the swimming pool? And what does council feel about that? You know, we've been trying to gauge our neighbors and what they're going to do and not everybody's made that decision yet. There are a number of facilities within the state and that list is growing that are deciding to close for the season. Others are still holding out maybe some hope for something, but, uh. You know, I guess I'd, I'd like to get councils feedback on what your thoughts are. On, do you want us to pursue something with opening, maybe even on a limited basis? You know, right now we can't do anything at least through the seventeenth. Um, and we've got plenty of work to do to get it ready to open. So we'd be looking probably at the end of the month anyway. But, uh, so there's that question out there also, um. You know, is, uh, all of you in, in years past, we've hosted a lot of, uh. Baseball and softball tournaments through U triple S A, USA softball. And they're hoping desperately that, uh, we'll be doing that again. You know, the big question there is. A lot of those teams are not local, most are not local. In fact, almost all of them are not local. They'll come from all over the state of Iowa. And, uh, you know, how do you guys feel, um, about that bringing in tournaments? Now they've put some guidelines together which are, are pretty stringent and pretty strict and, um, just like the athletic association has, I believe, for high school baseball. But, uh, still it brings a lot of people into this community, into one space. Um, you know, at, at a time and. You know, we'll, we'll have staff that would be exposed to that, uh, just like we will at the pool. And, uh, so. You know, we're struggling a little bit and, you know, we've gone both ways. And I guess we'd like some input and thoughts from you folks.
Tim, this is Barb. Excuse me, um, have you done any pencil pushing in terms of a break even possibility? You can't open to the first of July, does that help us next year? Have it, having trained staff, will that save us some time because those folks will come back? Or is there, is there just no way to recoup a, a six week season?
I don't know, you know, the, the pool never makes money. Um, you know, it's, uh, it's a situation where, you know, we've got. People that have bought season passes now that will have to, I think, you know, it's only fair that we turn around and we refund those season passes now. Because we're going to miss at least probably three to four weeks of a pool season. And, you know, we'll have to rethink if we do do something, uh, for a season, how do we do that? Is it just daily gate? Do we sell just punch passes, that sort of thing? But we've got some things to work through there. Um, you know, if you're limited on capacity and how many people you can come in, obviously that decreases amount of money that you can bring in. And, you know, staffing costs are still the same. It's still, you know, we got to pay the lifeguards to be there. We've got to pay. Um, probably, you know. A little bit extra because we're probably going to have to have at least one other person dedicated to doing some cleaning and disinfecting. Uh, throughout the day that maybe we wouldn't have had to do before. Uh, you still got to run the pumps, you still got to treat the water, you still got to heat it and, and those costs never go down. So. Um, you know, I think you would start probably this fiscal year. You know, it is what it is that, you know, was set in motion starting in July of last year, but. You know, if you open, say, July one and you run just a five or six week season. Um, with not much revenue, but the same expenses. Um, you know, you're going to start the next fiscal year probably in a deeper hole than what you, you would have originally.
Do you think that's playing into the decision that other cities are making, Tim?
The monetary aspect of it?
Yeah.
Absolutely, but it's also. You know, as, as, as important as that, I think you're, you're seeing other cities look at, you know. Do we want to put our staff out there in a face-to-face situation with, you know? Is it a hundred people? Is it three hundred and fifty people, you know, coming through the door and, uh. You know, can you social distance, you know, your staff from the patrons, you know? You'd like to think you could, but, um, if you got to go in after somebody, there's, you're not social distancing. It's, it's impossible. And you know, when people are in the water, the social distancing thing I think is really hard to, to manage. And, uh. You know, you'd like to think people would adhere to that, but, um. You know, I think we probably all saw a lot of stuff that happened over the weekend and, you know, on social media and things like that. You know, people don't always do that. Um, you know, we, we struggle with, uh, you know, space, our guard room out there. Um, is really small. There's no way to social distance our staff in there, in the guard room where they keep their stuff. Um, concession stand, we probably just have one person working even if we're allowed to have a concession stand. Uh, with the front office, there's two or three people in there. Be hard to social distance there. We'd have to put up probably some sort of partition. Maybe some plexiglass of some sort to, uh, separate our staff from, you know, that face-to-face interaction where they're exchanging. You know, money for, for entry.
Do we know? I, I was going to ask if, um. What the other cities in our general area for the same reasons that we were talking about, you know, not wanting other cities to surprise or to have a big influx from their neighboring cities. Do we know what, uh, what are like geographically neighboring cities are doing?
Well, we know Roland's building a new pool, so they won't have anything this summer. Story City, I believe, has decided to close. Boone has decided to close. Clive has decided to close. Ames is having this very discussion this evening at their council meeting. I do not know about Marshalltown. I do not know about Ankeny either.
Ankeny is not opening. This is Aaron.
What's that?
A- Ankeny is not opening.
Okay, good to know.
And Tim, it's Luke. Have you even gotten guidance from, from the health departments on what provisions you do have or go? Would have to do if you did open yet, or is that still?
No, we, we do have some recommendations and, uh, they are fairly lengthy. And, uh, it'll take some, some effort and some extra time to, uh, to be able to follow all those guidelines and make sure that. You know. One, remembering all of the steps and making sure that we're doing it properly. So. Um, there's recommendations from the Red Cross, from the Iowa Department of Public Health, from the CDC. Um, so it's a, it's a pretty lengthy list and I think we'd have to create some signage and do some education for the public as well.
Tim, is there any ramifications for the pool if we don't put water in it and it just spends a whole year being empty?
Well, um, yes, there is that, uh, a little bit. Um, it is hard on the finish. Uh, of the pool. We have a Diamond Bright finish and it can be hard on the finish of that pool. Um, one of the things that we've talked about and you've seen the invoices go through over the last year, we have done some. Uh, work on the pool for leak repair. And regardless of whether we open to the public or not, I think it's important for us to fill it and just make sure that those repairs. Work like they're supposed to. So we could, it would allow us some time to do that and we could maybe, you know, deal with that this summer as well.
Tim, is there the ability to do lessons and small group things and not have the big open swims? Or is that very, very cost prohibitive?
Um, yes, they, they are allowing swimming lessons and, um, they are allowing lap swimming. So those are, those are opportunities, um, to do and it could be done in, in small group, maybe one-on-one. One V two type settings and we've talked about that and how that could look a little bit. So. Um, but, uh, you know, right now bathhouses aren't even open at a pool. So we got to get past that aspect of it too. Um, you got to clean and sanitize equipment after it's been used by one group before another group can do it. So. There's some things to work through there, but it could be done. But honestly, we don't make money on swimming lessons either.
Anything else on this topic?
Well, I, um, Tim was talking a little bit about baseball tournaments and coming to score. And the, the, the thing I was, I brought up on that resolution from. You know, a half hour ago, talks about people not coming from outside our region. And, uh, it says it might increase staff or local residents to be increased threat of exposure to the virus should be canceled. Does that? Pertain to those tournaments that we just? That resolution we just reviewed, I, it sounds like that kind of puts a kibosh on that for at least. Thirty days.
I guess I'm not sure what we're classifying as our region though.
That was my question too. I think Rick said within maybe a county radius of Story County, maybe roughly, something like that. That, that was, I don't, I asked the same question, so.
And Aaron, do you have an interpretation of that resolution? Aaron, are you there? Doesn't look like it.
Oh, is that working?
Oh, yep.
Geez, sorry guys.
So the question was the word region in that previous resolution number forty-seven A.
Yeah, um. I mean, I think we are, I think we can be at liberty to define what we think that means, but I agree with what Rick was saying earlier. I think it, it, it means our. Bordering communities. Bordering county, bordering communities.
Any other discussion here?
The interpretation of that then would be that, um, in reference to tournaments. That there is, there is no tournaments for at least thirty days. Is that correct?
That. Well, that, that would be correct if. Let me pull the language real quick.
At least, at least that would have teams from outside our region.
Right. City, public events, trainings, meetings and any events, trainings and meetings planned to be held. Are here like on city property. So, yeah, I think that would be. Anything with, uh, anything on city property within the next thirty days.
Okay.
I, I would be for closing the pool for the year, especially to save a few dollars this year. I know it's. It's just such a mess right now. I know that's kind of contradicting what I said before about opening city hall, but. I'd be for looking at closing the pool for the rest of the year.
I know it's not a popular decision. I know people love going to the pool and I. Certainly hate to, to agree with that. Um. Unfortunately, it does sound like the, um. Economical impacts, um, combined with the. Uh, amount of regulations and the potential for, for putting our staff, um. Into harms way. I, I kind of tend to agree with that. Sorry about that. Um, so, yeah, I just, I, I would.
I think we should.
I think we should.
I think we need to make that decision sooner than later too, if we're going to do that. So people can. You know. We're not wondering for the next month, it's first of July, we're still trying to decide. Everyone else is closing. It's not like we're going to be the Lone Ranger out there. We're going to get ridiculed because I'll just about bet from the discussions I've had with. Tim Garten, some of the Ames people that Ames probably isn't going to be open either. It just, if I was a betting man, that's the bet I would take. So. If there's some opportunity to do some individual stuff and I think Tim's right, we need to fill the pool to make sure we don't, our repairs work. And Tim thinks we can safely open it for one-on-one swimming lap things. We can make that call down the road, but I think it's probably a good decision to make the, a general announcement that. We're not going to be open for business as usual, if that makes sense.
I would agree with the sooner rather than later aspect of this and. And lead with the security. To me, that's the issue more than the economics is the security of our people and our community and the region. So. I'm, I'm all about that. Oh, I was also thinking about those, we, I think the sooner we can rebate those family passes too. And make people more comfortable with that decision, the, probably the better.
Yeah, we can start that process relatively soon.
I agree too. There's no, if, if, it sounded like us and Ames are the only towns left open in the county with the pool and. There's no benefit to being the only one open in ten, in the county. I think that would be a larger negative.
Well, and I hate.
But I will be the least liked person in my house for the next week when I tell them this, but. We have a five foot, five foot little tiny pool that we wait in.
Well, and yeah, me too, Luke, because my daughter has been looking forward for years. To be a lifeguard at the pool and she was going to be one this year. So when she finds out, that's going to have to wait a year. I'm not going to be very popular either.
Yeah.
I just tell them to call their council people.
I think the mayor has a pool, doesn't he?
I think the other thing to consider, and I know I already said it once before, but the other, other thing that's really true and happy here is if everyone around us closes. You know where they're all going.
Yeah, we can't be the only ones open.
Yeah, that makes the decision for you basically.
Yeah, I want to throw my support in, um, and just encourage you to do the, what you need to do to make sure that the pool is secured. And, um, just take into consideration the fact that. Um, that everybody's safety is first and foremost, that safety and security and particularly that young staff that might not always make best decisions first.
Yep, we can do that. Also, I guess, um, as I sit here and think about, you know, wedding venues have now been allowed to open. At fifty percent capacity. We got to kind of roll with the same restrictions. That are placed on, on restaurants. Um. So we do have events that, uh, have gates hall, uh, booked. We do have events that have the pavilion booked. Um. You know, I think those are. I think we could handle those for the most part at fifty percent capacity. Um, it doesn't, uh, create a, a huge problem, especially at the pavilion. So we don't have staff there for that. They set that up. They, you know, tear it down, put everything away. Um, we just cleaned the building before and after they're, they've been there. Um, the, uh, gates hall. We don't have a tremendous amount of events in here through the month of June. I think they're probably manageable. At a fifty percent capacity, but again, what, what would your folks', uh, input be on that?
I sat in on a call related to churches, which are this, a similar sized confined space. And there were some pretty, um, strongly recommended ways of, of managing the heating and cooling systems. Um, cooling everything down first. Not having any, any fans or anything going on while folks are in the building and then waiting three to five hours after that. To let everything, all the droplets settle before going in and trying to do some cleanup or hosting a second event. Or in our case, a second service. Um, is that, are those guidelines available to you?
I have not seen those. If you have a link to it or something you could forward to me would be great.
I'll make a note and see if I can find it.
You know, but typically when we have an event, it's just one event per day. We don't have multiple. You know, but typically when we have an event, it's just one event per day. We don't have multiple, you know, ones following each other, so. Think we could manage that. The governor also opened playgrounds as of June first, skate parks as of June first. And we've got the last of our supplies and equipment to put in some of our public restrooms last week. Staff will be putting those in this week out in our public restrooms in the parks. Is it safe to say that you would like to have those facilities open on June first?
Tim, I have a question for you, and this is kind of getting to that, like. If the pool's not gonna open, how much flexibility do you have with any of the pool staff that you've hired to be able to help with some of those tasks? Uh, as far as covering those man-hours, or do you think that your staff's going to be able to handle the added burden of cleaning?
You know, we. Well, I guess I, I really don't know for sure. I'd like to think we could handle it with what we have, but. You know, I, I do feel bad for the staff that won't have anything this summer as well and. You know, if we could find some things for them to do and if we could get some of those involved, we are doing, uh, starting in June. Some rec programming based on a real small group basis, and if we can involve some of those in, in that, we, we can certainly try and do that as well.
I mean, yeah, I just, you think about the, the kids and the folks that were, were gonna have those jobs this summer and, and wanting to keep them. Involved maybe in future years too, and not find something else in the meantime or whatever, so.
Right.
I don't know if that's a possibility.
Yeah, yep. So certainly worth consideration and, uh. You know, it'll depend too if, uh, and we'll talk some more here and I think we can come back to you with some follow-up information on. You know, swim lessons, lap swim, that sort of thing here in the, in the coming days and send some information out to you.
My only concern with opening the parks is, as long as you feel. Secure in our abilities to sanitize as directed. Maybe a little extra, I would be okay with us opening up. If you're not comfortable with it, then we need to have a further discussion on it.
Okay. We'll visit with staff again this week and we'll just make sure everybody's on the same page and I will send out follow-up to you by the end of the week.
Do we know what other communities are doing with the playground and public restroom?
I, I don't, I don't know that answer, Luke. I don't. I can try and get some of that information for you though.
Just like, like with the pool, if we're the only one that has our parks open, everybody's gonna come to our parks, so.
Correct, understood.
Anything else for tonight? Otherwise, well.
On the, one more question though, back to the, the tournaments and the region. When we discuss region, we're talking our bordering counties. Is that correct?
Probably fair to say, Erin, central Iowa.
I would say any, any, any area that is touching the city of Nevada.
So any county surrounding Story County or?
Correct.
Okay.
Again, you guys, it's your resolution, so I mean, you guys can divine in if, it, when I. When I read it, that's what, that's how I interpret it, but if you guys want to interpret it narrower or broader, you can certainly do that.
Well, the reason I'm asking is just so that we have the proper information when we respond to their request here tomorrow or the next day. I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm on the same page as everybody else.
How does that affect the baseball schedule with the condensed schedule that we're talking about if there's teams coming from outside that area?
Well, I don't know on the tournament side of things, I guess from a high school baseball perspective, I don't know where all their opponents come from.
And, and I think, and can we? Since the school is, in that field is different, can we treat that differently? And you're talking one other team coming with a handful of parents maybe versus dozens.
I would prefer that Nevada Park and Rec did not interfere with the school scheduling at all.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
Right, I would agree with that. But I just wanted to make sure that, that there weren't gonna be any issues there.
Okay.
So Tim, are you asking about an event at the fourplex?
Yes. Because I know they're gonna ask.
Because everybody else said no.
We're, we're all, well, uh, not, no, not everybody has said no, but, uh, you know, it just depends. You know, how many teams they have and how they put them together. I don't know where they'll all, all come from. It could be hard to get a situation or a team set up here where it's just teams from our neighboring counties. I don't know that, the answer to that question, but I just want to have that information so we can tell them what the parameters are that they're working in.
Are you, Tim, talking about the tournaments that we've already? That we've already committed ourselves to for the summer?
Well, I don't know how committed we are. They've asked to, to rent our facility. There is one that Ames CVB and the city of Nevada Park and Rec have partnered with. That's a USA softball, and again, that would, that's in the middle of, well, I know it's in June. But that particular one, I know will probably have teams from outside of the neighboring counties. So we wouldn't have an impact on that.
That's probably out of state, some of those.
No, I don't think so. It would, they would all be in state. And U triple S A has also said that they're gonna keep all their tournaments to in-state teams only. So maybe we can get some more information and come back to you with that too.
I mean, it, you guys can also go back and revisit that resolution. I mean, you didn't take action on it. The, the choice was to leave it as is, but i- if you want to have some leniency there, you sure can go back and revisit that.
Yeah, I'd say let's revisit that at our first June meeting.
Does that give you time, Tim, or will they need to do that before then?
Well, I'm sure he probably would like an answer sooner rather than later, but. You know, again. You gotta have, um, you know, you gotta be committed, you know, if we're gonna be leaning on it, to having these teams from all over the state come in.
I mean, if, are we able to have social distancing? Requirements of these teams when they come and are we going to close down the concession stand or are we gonna have concessions? I mean, I think those are, are things worth weighing. I would, I would hate to see us. Lose those opportunities, but at the same time you have to consider safety. I mean, do you think that's remotely feasible?
Um, well, go ahead. I can speak a little to that, Tim. I don't know how much Tim's read of it or not, but. Being both my kids play U triple S A and I coach U triple S A, we've got a lot of things like. U triple S A is gonna put more time between games. So there isn't so much of the kids crossing. Uh, they're gonna make us as coaches, they're gonna make us disinfect the bleachers. Uh, excuse me, not the bleachers, but all the benches and equipment before and after, so if I do it after. And Jason's team comes in after us, he has to do it before. They don't want them, the kids sharing equipment. They don't want them sharing helmets, bats, gloves. Uh, they've also changed the rules that. You can wear PPE if you want. That's not usually certified. Equipment, you can't wear a mask on the field now, so to speak, but they're gonna waive all that stuff with, as a SARS approved equipment. Um, I could go on and on, but they've done a lot of, lot of things to. To try to inner, you know, keep them from interacting umpires just, I think umpires are gonna wear a mask full-time because. That's the closest when there's the catcher, the umpire and, and a kid at bat. You know, they want us to sanitize bats. Soon as they're done, they get thrown in the dirt, they're on first base, they want us to. Spray it down with Lysol or hand sanitizer or whatever. I mean, it's gonna be a lot more work for everybody to do it, but. They're doing their best, so I mean, if, um. I guess we'll have to kind of see where Tim's at. I mean, there, it's not gonna be business as usual, let's put it that way. With, with these tournaments.
Tim, do you think that your staff would be comfortable working those situations if? You know, knowing that those guidelines are in place, you feel like the attitude of your staff is, is such that, that they'd be comfortable with it? Would they be worried? What's the, the temperature there?
As far as prep for the facility, you know, a lot of that is done before the first game of the day. We wouldn't have people there running clocks or scoreboards or anything like that. Uh, we do have a supervisor on site, we, you know, probably have to have somebody there to help make sure we're cleaning and disinfecting enough. You know, we'll have to make a decision on the concession stand. Are we gonna do that or are we not gonna do that? You know, I don't think the problem will necessarily be the, the players and the coaches. I think that'll be handled pretty well. They'll probably take care of that on their own. It's the parents and everybody else that comes as a spectator. Are they gonna, you know, are they gonna social distance like they're supposed to, that sort of thing? Um, it is pretty congested up there when you do get eight teams playing at one time. Um, one of the things that Rhonda and I have talked about too possibly, you know, is, uh. You know, maybe not necessarily so much where they come from as much as if we can limit. The number of teams that are even at the park at one time. So that's a possibility. I don't know, I guess I, we, we've gone back and forth, back and forth and. You know, I do feel bad in the fact too that, and I agree with Rick's comment earlier that, you know, we did talk early on and, you know. How does our community, what are the optics looking like from our community when we've canceled our competitive programs? For our kids and then we're going to allow outside, you know, organizations to come in and run competitive tournaments, so. But again, it, this is such a fluid situation, this thing changes daily, so who knows in two more weeks what this might look like again, so maybe it's not an issue.
Yeah, and when was the, the stuff for our kids would have already been going, correct? So we're talking.
Typically, our baseball would have started, yeah, youth baseball, they would have started and softball, they would have started in mid-April, early May and. Like youth baseball would have been done by the end of June. About we even the beginning, softball done by the end of June.
So I think it's easy to justify to the community, they're, they're taking place at different times, so there are different conversations.
Yeah, right, I understand.
Uh, another thing to consider with that, and I hate to keep being the negative. Person on all this, but if, if a bunch of teams come into Nevada and they play and then they go back out and then. Something got spread between those teams, the news headline's gonna be tournament in Nevada. Cause, you know, the, the spread like this, I, I don't know that that's a headline that we want to see, you know. Likely to happen, but that's another thing to consider as well, um, beyond just the, the financial or the, uh.
And Tim, for, for those tournaments as well. Do they have to take place in the fourplex or can the other, I know there, the other facilities you have in the community aren't as nice, but are they usable to spread out? Games throughout the community, spread out the teams?
Well, they pretty much need to be there.
Okay.
Yeah, just from a control standpoint and that's just where, you know, kind of the. The tournament is all set up at and they have a representative there that deals with everything and so.
I think, you know, we've all raised some concerns and I think a great thing would be to, to have. Some of these guidelines that maybe Brian had talked about. Are we gonna have all that stuff in place? Is it gonna be feasible for our staff to do it? And maybe come back to us in the June meeting and that's just. Until then, I don't think any of us feel comfortable allowing it. I mean, I think we're all interested in allowing it, but I don't think any of us are comfortable in, in allowing it until we know more.
Yeah, I guess the real question is if you, would you be willing to go sit in the stands and watch the games?
Well, maybe in a bag chair along the side.
Well, I think one of the things that's part of their, their protocol is that nobody's in the bleachers. But you, you have to bring your own chair and spread out and.
Can those bleachers around the fourplex be removed to allow more room for lawn chairs?
They can, not very easy.
Okay.
To do that really, and it isn't gonna really get you that much more room for the amount of work it's gonna take to move them and store them.
So what I'm hearing a lot of on all of the topics is punt to June eighth and see if the situation's different. Is that where everybody is?
I think so.
Yeah, I, I'd need more information.
Okay, then we'll, then we'll punt to June eighth and in the meantime, hopefully have more answers to some of those questions.
Looks like Rhonda's got her hand up.
Rhonda, your talking's permitted, so you can unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want, want you all to be aware that. These organizations like U triple S A and USA softball, their tournaments that they want to start hosting is June thirteenth and June fourteenth and then. Uh, the ASA or USA softball tournament is that next weekend. And I just, I don't know if, if they can actually wait until that June eighth for us to make a decision. That's, that's my biggest concern. It, is it something that if we put together some items that. We can show what we're gonna do, that you guys could make a decision before that June eighth date, so that way. They have the information that they need to move forward.
I would be willing to consider that.
Yeah, I would too. I would, I, yeah, absolutely.
So. Erin, without having a special meeting, is there a way that that could be accomplished where staff could provide a report back?
Well, only if you're gonna put specific parameters in place tonight and take action on those. In relation to the resolution that's on the agenda, because otherwise you're gonna have a conversation outside of a open meeting.
So like, so it could be something along the lines of staff can provide a report on how they're gonna handle it and if. Two council members object, then we have to have a meeting, a special meeting to discuss or something?
No, because even then that's action of council where you've got people voting on whether or not they would agree with it. So I think you'd have to come up with the criteria tonight saying that you guys would relax. Seven A of the, whatever the resolution number forty-seven A in the event that. That Tim can provide, you know, proper social distancing, that the concessions are not gonna be open. Whatever other parameters you want to put in place and, and then there's no few, no more action from the council, so that'd be the only way. To do it without another meeting, otherwise you're looking at getting whatever recommendations you want back from Tim and then having a special meeting to discuss those.
Okay, council, what would you like to do?
I think if Tim and Rhonda. Are comfortable with. Following the. Guidelines that the governor has put out on, you know, sports facilities. And what triple US, triple, uh, U triple S A and USA baseball and softball put out there. I feel pretty comfortable. That's hard for me to say because I've read all that stuff and I know you all haven't. I've read through it a few times, so it's, it's pretty stringent. The only thing I was just sitting there thinking, I can't, I can't. I can't speak to concession stand part of it. I know like the high school unions have said no concession stands. I can't remember what triple U. Triple S A has said about it.
I would be totally against the concession stand being open.
Well, and I think that would probably be safer for city staff, in my opinion. It's not the end of the world. Most, and Rhonda can speak to this too. She's been to a lot of tournaments, like I have most of us that are spending the day pack. Pack for that, you know what I mean? Okay, I, I'm okay with it. It's, it's, you know, and if, if, if we have to have a Zoom meeting. Friday morning or Monday morning, first thing quickly to, so everyone else can read the guidelines and Rhonda and, and. And Tim wanna do something like that. So be it, but I'm okay if they're okay. With following the guidelines that have been put out by their, all the organizations already.
I, I agree with Brian and I also, I guess I do have a question, um, you know, with no concession stands, would you be allowing? Like private, um, third-party vendors in to sell, like I. like private um, third-party vendors in to sell? Like I know Kona Ice has done those in the past, just using it as an example. Would those be allowed or would that be a city call? Would that be, who's called that be? I assume Parks and Rec?
I guess we haven't talked about that, but my thought would be at this point, no, but.
Yeah, I would say at that point you'd have people bring their own for their own personal use.
How would the restroom cleaning situation work out out there, Tim or Rhonda?
I think we just have to make efforts to be in there, you know, on a regular basis, whether that's every hour. That uh, you know, play is going on until it's done or, you know, every two hours. Can't remember what the guideline is on that from CDC, but um.
Can, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Um, so typically what we do now is we clean uh, the restrooms in between each set of games and we would, m- my recommendation would be that the restrooms would get cleaned at least every hour. Um, and, and we can make that happen and make that work. And as far as concession stands go, I mean, I would reiterate what Tim said, that we would not allow outside vendor sources to come in and provide anything. Um, one thing that, that I think should be considered and Tim and I can definitely talk about this is um, the concession stand, you know, the feasibility of that being open for just like bottled drinks and prepackaged foods. I don't think that that should be thrown out of consideration. I think that's easy um, to do and I'm not talking nachos and hot dogs and all that stuff, but prepackaged stuff might be feasible to, to sell out of the concession stand without, out much um, issue or, or staff safety uh, problems with that. So that's something that we could definitely talk about um, in, in our recommendation for this.
And I'll just say that Park and Rec has been really methodical through the whole process and I trust staff to make wise decisions. I guess the question is, are we going to have a motion on that tonight or are we going to schedule a separate meeting?
Well, I can make a motion if that's what we want to do tonight. Um, I, I'll just make one and if, if no one's comfortable with it, we can vote it down because that's the proper way to do it. So I'm going to make a motion.
Brian, this is Aaron. Hey, since we, we gotta be working on something that's an action item on the agenda. So we really are going back and revisiting um, uh, seven D on the agenda.
Okay.
And talking about the parameters in that resolution number forty-seven A sub seven. So I just want to make sure that your motion is talking about that because otherwise we don't have a, a specific action item.
So Aaron, do we have, do we have to move, can we just move on from meeting and go back to D or do we need a motion to do that?
No, you can, you can go back to, well, yeah, you can go back to D. Um, I just, I want to make sure that we relax that if, if you're wanting to go forward with allowing a tournament.
Okay. So I think we are exhausting E, so we'll be on D.
You know, I don't know. Should we just have another special meeting in a couple of days? So we can do this the right way instead of just trying to wing it tonight. I mean, I don't think we need to wait a week. Alls we gotta do is if we post something in the morning, what is it, a twenty-four hour or forty-eight hour ahead of time for, for a special meeting? I can't remember. I should know.
Twenty-four hour notice is what's required.
I mean, we could do this meeting, it'd take ten minutes some morning, like tomorrow's Wednesday, like Thursday or Friday morning before everyone gets going on their day. Do it, I mean, I think we could do it the right way, so to speak, or unless Aaron thinks we can navigate it correctly this way or, or, or have a another meeting. That's, I, I'm just throwing, I'm throwing that out there.
We can put some information together for you in the next day or so and get it out to you if you want to do that. So you have it for a, you know, a quickie meeting in the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
Is June first too late to have a meeting if we did it on a normal Monday time?
I think June first would be acceptable and I think we can get information out to you um, this week. So you could take, take a look at it and that way, um, if any questions arise or, or anything comes up that, that you think needs further investigation, that we can go ahead and do that. Um, but I think June first would be, would be a good timeframe.
Okay, that's what I was thinking because I, I, the last thing I'd want to do is have a meeting and have more questions that folks can get a chance to ask. So if they, if council gets info in a couple of days, they have Friday to ask questions, the weekend to think about it, and then we meet Monday at six, which is a normal time. Most of us are used to meeting, then that could work.
And, and also I, I do like that. I, I don't want anybody to rush into anything. Um, I think it is something that needs to be thought about, well thought through. And then um, have you guys have the opportunity to, to see everything on paper, what we're gonna try to do our best to accomplish. Um, so we can get people back into some sort of normalcy, hopefully, again, uh, baby step wise.
Yeah, that, I agree with Rhonda. That was kind of my point too, is not everyone's had the opportunity to look at it like I have and Rhonda has and Tim that you know, there's, you know, five other people, six other people, a lot of people out there that I think need to kind of wrap their head around it. So.
Okay. So we'll all pencil in or write in Monday at six and plan on that.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to ask one more time if there's items left for I to me. And I'm going to move on before anybody says anything. Okay, then we'll move on to new business. A, resolution number sixty-two, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Resolution setting a public hearing for the twenty twenty B refunding of the water revenue bonds.
Move to approve.
Wait.
Second.
Okay, so we'll take the motion the second and then we have some, it's like some potential comment here or any, anything from staff? I think with Michael.
I know you guys had a long night. I'll be brief. Um, we got the ball rolling with this on, with staff two weeks ago and the event rates continued to trend favorably. They have the projected savings now look relatively conservative. And we've been working with staff and your bond attorneys at Dorsey to keep the ball rolling. You'll have the public hearing and potential additional action um, at your June eighth meeting. We'll continue to evaluate the market, but we'd be able to potentially lock in refinancing savings for your water utility on June twenty-second. So we'll just keep the ball rolling and uh, be prepared with more details for you on the eighth.
So we had the motion, the second, any discussion? Seeing none, Karen will take a vote.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Hanson.
Hi.
Mitten.
Hi.
Nielsen.
Hi.
Sampson.
Hi.
Okay, that passes. Thank you very much. Um, which then will move us to new business B, resolution number sixty-three, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Resolution approving the degrill, development agreement with Burke Corporation, which you all have a draft in front of you. And I know Chad is on the line, um, as well as Tracy from Burke. Um, we did get late in the day comment from H R Green. Um, so I don't know if Larry or Karen want to speak to that. Um, and yeah, we'll kind of, we, we didn't pull it just because we, there might be some questions. The, the H R Green comments, at least from my initial reading, um, didn't really change the spirit of the agreement. There were, was more buttoning up some technicalities. So I don't think the spirit of it changes. So I thought it would probably be good just to still have it on here. Um, so Larry or Karen, any comment regarding H R Green's comments today?
Uh, yes, I, I've had a couple of conversations with Mike Roth and had a chance to review some of the comments that he and Jim Rasmussen uh, made on the draft agreement. And I would have a tendency to agree with you that it's uh, it's more on the technical side. And I, I believe as I, as I read that, that the development agreement, most of the uh, most of the technical part of that will occur with the wastewater treatment plant when the city negotiates a treatment agreement with Burke sometime after the contract is let and final costs are known on the project. So I, I don't have any real heartburn with that, that development agreement. I had seen that last year when uh, the Matt Marsden was, was involved in negotiating that agreement. Um, I don't, I don't have the heartburn that uh, that, that Mike and Jim did with that. And that's it. I, I, I think there's some, there are some grammatical errors in there, but that can be corrected. So.
Okay, that does make me feel a little bit better because that, like Larry said, Matt worked on it and then he left and then we revisited it with Chad and Chad and I have gone back and forth quite a bit and then COVID happened and then thought we finally had it at the finish line. So I was hoping, yeah, that, and that's the thing too. We don't want to pass something if not everyone's comfortable, but hearing Larry's feedback helps. So Larry, you don't think that there's anything in there that was problem? Because a lot of the comments said have, have attorneys look at this and I know the attorneys have been looking at it.
There's one, there are, there's a key component missing. There's, there's a reference in there where it's time to exhibit E, which is the uh, the wastewater treatment facilities themselves. And there is no exhibit E attached to the agreement. And we're not really sure what would be part of that agreement uh, within that exhibit E. So I don't, there's, there's also some language in there that the uh, the city and H R Green and Burke will work together to develop the plans almost. And we're, we're at that point that we, that we uh, the uh, the, the Burke engineers in the, in the design process. So we're well down that road already and the uh, we'll have to change it after that. So. We, we, we know what the, the design parameters are based on the expected loads and flows from Burke. Um, and so I, I, we can just proceed with that matter, but there is a key component missing in there. That's exhibit.
Larry, this is Luke. Would there be anything negative if, if we held this up to the special meeting that we're already talking about on the first? And then we all have a copy of it and everybody has signed off on it by then?
Well, I think Chad may want to address that. I, I don't have a particular problem.
Yeah, no, that wouldn't uh, impact our project at all. And Larry, to your point, um, you know, from day one of drafting that till today, there's a number of things that, um, like paving of South D Avenue, you know, that's already completed, but in speaking with uh, Mr. Danos on behalf of the city and, and our legal department, they just, we decided just leave it in there to, to keep modifying and changing it as these things progress and happen. Uh, the decision was made not to do that. And you hit the nail right on the head. As far as the wastewater treatment agreement goes, we're going to have a separate, a complete separate agreement that's going to supersede anything that's in this contract. Um, early on, uh, Matt and myself and, you know, with some help from John Hall and, and the mayor, we were trying to, to include it into that document and it just froze the process. And so we kind of pulled as much language out of there as possible that really said what we're going to do because at that time, the city, the engineers didn't know what we were even going to build. Um, and so we really tried to keep that vague to say really two things. Number one, we want to make sure the city knows that we've got this project coming and you're committing to, to building a wastewater treatment facility that will accommodate our additional needs. As you know, we've got the city of Ames uh, who has stepped up to assist us in the, in the meantime. And so that, that is, that is built. And then number two, our commitment in there is that we agree to work with you in good faith, to work with the city in good faith, to develop that agreement. That's really the whole spirit of the, of the wastewater treatment component that we're trying to capture as it sits today. But to answer your question, you know, sorry, Mayor, long, long answer your question, but um, to, to wait to, to cover it and have more time to review it uh, June first doesn't impact our project at all. Not a problem for our side.
I mean, if we're already meeting a week from now and it doesn't affect Chad's uh, you know, Burke's uh, project, I would, would be fine with that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not a lawyer. I'm probably not going to understand all the changes that are being done, but I'd like to hear everybody on the same page if it doesn't hurt anything. I guess I'd move the table at to our June first meeting.
And I don't even know if we would need a motion to that. Do we, Aaron? Can we just, we can just not? Yeah.
Nope, just don't take act, take action this evening.
Okay. Then we'll, Karen can make note tab that in on the agenda um, and follow up tomorrow with our legal counsel um, to see what those comments were from H R Green.
Great. If I may, I'll just echo uh, Rhonda's comments. If you have any questions between now and then, uh, shoot them over. We'll be happy to, to get them over to you. If there's some language now that we have some time, um, we could certainly change some language or, or remove paragraphs and, and that exhibit E, Larry, if uh, um, you know, we can get that out of there. We can, we can, we can clean it up certainly. But just let me know what, you know, what's needed.
Discuss, discuss some of the comments that we had. So, yeah, I don't think it'd take all that long.
Okay. Sounds good. Then we'll leave that one. Okay, anything else on that topic before Monday? Okay, sounds good. Then we will close new business and move on to reports and go to Rick. See, he might be muted. We were picking up feedback from you earlier, Rick, so I muted you. So I just unmuted you.
So I gotta repeat everything I just said?
Hopefully it wasn't very much.
No, it wasn't very much. No, I don't have anything other than my report. If you have questions, I'll be, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
Okay, council, anything for Rick? See, there's that back.
Hey, Rick, it's Luke. Uh, we talked about nuisance abatement at the coffee on Saturday and then um, I think, I think you were in the email, but we got an email from a citizen with some contacts for people who might have an old car that need to donate as a resource to give to people who, who might be having problems with their, you know, keep of their yard or the property. Um, is there any way we can put together a packet to give to people who are, who are, have, have upkeep issues with the nuisance abatement program? That gives them um, contacts to like long, care facilities or, or places to donate the, the, the a, a car or place to give, give, donate like uh, or not donate, but places like heavy trash resources that they can use to pick stuff like that up. Can we give that information to them as we, as we come to them? I'm thinking mainly like with the substance abuse committee, we had a packet of information that the police officers had in their, in their car that they could give to people who are in crisis and needed contact information or something like that. Do we have something of that nature that we can give to people with the nuisance abatement program or can we do that?
We can do that. Um, the information that came from the uh, meeting on Saturday, I passed on to Sergeant's media. Uh, he's made contact with, with that person. I'm not, I'm not sure of the details of that conversation, but he is putting a list together uh, as, um, in reference to what you're talking about, of, of scrapers and people that will be able to assist with different aspects that um, uh, that come up. So uh, as soon as he gets that put together, I'll uh, I'll give that out to all the council so they're aware of it. And they know what's on that list. And, and of course, if anybody has any other information that might be useful, um, you know, pass it on to me and we'll, we'll include that in the list. Um, and just for your information, um, we've got a couple of um, nuisance complaints since then. Uh, we've checked them out. We put them on our list. Um, Sergeant says media alluded to this. Most, most of the nuisance abatements we get, they're generally taken care of um, fairly quickly. Um, and so it's the ones that we end up having to deal with year after year that we have a lot of problems with. Um, but occasionally we do come across um, uh, residents um, that have some issues that need some assistance and that list would be very useful um, to, to people along those lines. Again, Again, you know, our goal is to clean up the property, not to give out tickets. They're, they're pricey tickets. So.
Thanks, Rick.
Anybody got anything else?
And then for my report.
Okay, that's all I got.
Thanks, Rick. Um, the coffees on Saturday have continued to go well. The one last Saturday got fifteen hundred views or more the last time I looked. So it's continued to have some good engagement from the community. So with that, my first question is, are there timely topics that staff or counsel would like to do this upcoming Saturday? Do we want to continue to do them weekly? Do we want to back off? And we appreciate it.
First of all, I appreciated having Lucy Barton on there. I thought that was really educational and, and good. And also having Sergeant Sismedia on there to talk about the nuisance abatement. I think that people were, were great about that. I guess my other question is, when do we think we might start wanting to have them in person again? Or, or do we?
I think that's been a great smash and hopefully we can continue them. And maybe we don't need to do them in person, but maybe we still do. Because I know there are some people that aren't on Facebook or electronically savvy.
I did actually want to get back to in person. I just, it's hard to distance when you're sitting around a table.
Right. Yeah, well, and, and the reason I brought that up was I actually, somebody asked me today about doing it in person. I know that Evy's now got tables over on the gathering side for people to be able to spread out. But you're right about the distancing. So it was just a question that was brought to me.
I mean, yeah, that, I was just thinking that you could potentially do it on the, the big side and have people have chairs spread out in a big circle where they're six feet apart.
Well, Mayor, I would think one of the topics that we'll want to feature pretty soon when we get it figured out would be our parks and rec. What are we doing? Because people are going to want to hear and, you know, they have Tim and Rhonda involved in that would be a timely topic.
Yeah, I was definitely thinking of having them on this Saturday, but with us waiting until Monday for the tournament, maybe we'll have them on the following if they're available.
Might be good.
I know folks are wondering about library, so we can hear from Shannon on, on that too. That would be one. And it doesn't have to be topic related. It can be another open one. We just let the community hop on the Zoom and see where it goes.
An update on, on the downtown construction might be worthwhile. I know the, the weather probably slowed it down a little bit, but maybe a timeline on how that's going and when completion and that type of stuff. I don't know if Sean would be around for that or not. Otherwise, I'd echo what Sandy just said. I think, yeah, we just spent an hour plus talking about it. So I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions about all the stuff with Parks and Rec.
Okay.
In the pool.
So this Saturday, do we want to do an, an open discussion? And then for the sixth, do more of the theme again?
Mayor Barker, this is Shannon. Our staff will be meeting tomorrow. And so we may have some information about the library. I can let you know tomorrow. If we could be something on Saturday.
Okay. And Sean for downtown. Would you want to give an update for that whenever we have another themed one?
Yeah, can you guys hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be happy to do it. Sorry about that. I had a different mute button. But yeah, no, just let me know what time.
Okay, so we'll wait, we'll wait and see what library says. And then, so we have potential to do Park and Rec the next Saturday and then we'll work in library in downtown. So those three topics in the next two weeks somehow will be seen together.
Cool.
Okay. So with that, council reports. Okay, not seeing any. So we will go to staff and I'll just kind of go down this list here. Tim, anything that we haven't already talked about?
No, I think you've heard enough from me tonight. We'll be getting you a lot of info in the next few days. So.
Okay. Jeremy.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. Yep.
I'm glad to have my crew at the street shed back together. We're, we're getting some stuff done. The water department's back together. Whenever we're working close together, we, we're wearing masks. And we got them available in case somebody we come in contact, contact with is uncomfortable. So that's what we're doing. Other than that, that's about all I got. I'll take any questions.
Okay, any questions for Jeremy? Okay, thanks, Jeremy. Okay, so we will move on to, let's see, anything for Mike?
Uh, not really too much other than what we discussed. We had an interesting meeting this afternoon talking about security and cameras and all kinds of things at the new wastewater plant in City Hall. And slight years ahead of the log chain in the padlock I have. So it'll be interesting. And as far as swimming is concerned, I have plenty of tanks of water if anybody's interested to take a dip.
Hey, I don't know if anyone's going to take you up on that. Doesn't look like any council has anything for Mike. So we'll move down to Shannon.
Okay, so I know that, you know, there have been a lot of questions about the library and what's going on with it. And you guys have our phase plan of how everything is going. We've been trying to communicate to the, the public. It's kind of like, we are on the more cautious side as far as the reopening and even to some extent doing curbside. So we've been holding off and trying to find, like, see where the numbers have gone after things have started reopening. So that's why we're meeting tomorrow and we'll be figuring out when we're going to start curbside at that point. But aside from all of the behind the scenes plans that have been going behind, going on with that, we've been planning our summer reading because obviously that's not going to be how it normally has been. So Travis has been doing a lot of really awesome storytimes and read alongs and stuff. But there's a lot of summer that is, you know, a lot more than that. So we're putting together like a kind of a, a level up type of thing. So we're going to put together a bunch of quests that people can do. And this is for all ages. This isn't just for kids. This isn't just for teens. This isn't just for adults. Everybody can participate in these quests. And so you'll gain kind of experience points for the quests that you participate in. And as you do that, you'll kind of level up your character. We're talking to Cisco, who is the guy who did our drawing class in fall, I guess it was. It feels like a really long time ago. But to see if he would be willing to make as kind of the final prize type thing to see if he would be willing to do drawings of people. And we're just trying to look at other ways that we can engage with people that isn't having people in the same place because we don't feel comfortable with that. There's a lot that can go on with that in the library. So those are kind of the, the main things that are on our, our sites right now. So.
Counsel, anything for Shannon? I would just say the feedback I'm hearing is more related to curbside than people wanting to go in. So if that means anything for your discussion tomorrow.
Yeah, it does. And I think a lot of it has just been kind of trying to see where the, the trends are going and what, the more information we know, you know, we're not planning on not doing curbside forever. That's definitely not a thing. So, but we've just kind of been working with Rick a little bit to figure out if there are things with, that we can come forward as a city as like, hey, we're doing these things at the same time. And also just seeing what, the more information we can get, the better. And so like the CDC just came out a couple of days ago with more information about things not living on surfaces or the virus not being as spreadable on surfaces. And that makes us feel a little bit better with this type of thing. But we, we won't know for sure until tomorrow and we chat. And yeah, we, we definitely want to be doing curbside, but we also want everyone involved to be saved.
Counsel, anything for library?
Sorry, I pushed my mute button accidentally, but like the staff members getting back inside the building and figuring out how to work together and still be a part is also a thing that we've been working on figuring out too.
Okay. Let's see, Sean. Are you there, Sean?
Oh, hi. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, if you guys got any questions about anything I, my report, P and Z will meet on the first. We'll have a couple of people probably call into that meeting, but we will be, we'll be meeting. Otherwise, as far as like the project goes, Main Street, just imagine like this week never happened. It's with the rain and everything, you're, we're not going to see much getting done. Outside, we are working on, in the basements, cutting holes and getting ready for bringing the sewer service, the surfaces in when the weather gets a little nicer. But the sanitary sewers in between J and K, and then we'll be working on the, on the storm sewer probably starting next week. So we'll be finishing that up and then working on water. It's all going relatively well.
Okay, and one quick question there, Sean. Were you meeting on Zoom or P and Z?
No, we'll be meeting in, in the council chambers.
Okay, sounds good. I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to overlap our special meeting.
No, 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 we'll be meeting in the council chambers. We've got it. So I think we've got, can separate out. We've only got a couple of items. There, one scheduling a public hearing and the other one's a, a small subdivision. So it shouldn't be too much controversy.
Sounds good. Counsel, anything for Sean? Okay, thanks, Sean. Okay, let me prove my staff list here. I think next we're going to Karen.
Just been working on the league survey. They are pushing cities are essential. So they put out a survey asking for stories and financial impact. So been trying to put together some numbers for them. Have attended the wastewater treatment sixty percent review and finalizing the, getting ready for the city administrator schedule for the interviews next week. And the custodian, as I said earlier, his last day was today. So we've got that out for advertisement and hopefully get some applications for that and be looking at interviewing and getting someone hired as soon as we can.
And speaking of that, we, we need to button down the, how we're going to do the tour, whether we're going to do individual vehicles with each candidate or whether we're going to put them all in, in a bus or something. I think probably the individual is probably better at this point, but. So with counsel, is there anyone who can't be there the whole day? Okay, looks like you all can't. So we might divide all of you up and play tour guide. So, because the department heads will probably end up being at their departments for that rather than roaming. So we'll probably have counsel take them from place to place. So we'll button up those details and get them to you, but you can plan on being involved in the morning somehow.
Can I protest who I got stuck with? No offense, Brian.
Oh, for your group?
No, just kidding, just kidding.
Well, I put you there because I knew he'd have to be kept in line. So I thought Jason would be good about keeping Brian in line and on task.
I think he's talking about Jeremy, not me.
Okay. There's nothing else for Karen, then we'll move on to Larry.
Well, the, about two weeks ago, on the thirteenth, the steering committee on the wastewater treatment plant met with HR Green staff and reviewed the sixty percent design stage plans, which was normally called the preliminary plans. So we're getting down the road quite a ways and making some, some critical decisions in regard to building faces and this type of thing. The process is coming along very, very well. And as I mentioned, I think at the last meeting, we had a, we had a meeting with the Story County Planning and Development Staff to kick off the process of getting the producer use permit. The information with that was derived from these preliminary plans. So that was also the basis for the last project that the, that the city had. And so that process is moving right along. Other than that, we're doing a lot of working with Sean on some projects. We've had a couple of different subdivisions developments. We've got the construction plans for the South Land subdivision. And those have been reviewed and comments made to the engineers. And I think too serious, but we do have some issues to work out on that one. Then the small industrial subdivision that Sean mentioned on West Avenue up the, excuse me, yeah, West F Avenue in the West Industrial Park, the five block subdivision out there that the preliminary classmen submitted for and will be on the next P and Z meeting. Other than that, I think Sean has updated you on the progress of the downtown project that's coming on strangely well. I think this is about the first week to do a lot of work down there, but that's coming along much better than we probably would have anticipated. And Sean even informed me that there's talk of getting more done this year than what we had anticipated. So we, the first paping went down last week. I did come up and do a site visit that day. And the sidewalks and parking lot, parking areas, the, coming along shortly. So it's all, it's all starting to come together and looking through. So with that, if you get questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Counsel, anything for Larry? And seeing none, we'll go to Aaron. I don't know if I see her listed anymore.
I think she DC'd.
Okay, well, we'll give her a second. Hopefully she was going to tell us she has nothing anyway. Karen, do you know anything that, or Rick, do you guys know of anything that Aaron would have?
I don't.
Okay. Then with that, we can go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Jane, Jason, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, then we'll see you all Monday. And then Thursday, and then Monday again. Maybe Saturday. See ya.
See ya.